Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks so much for joining us this evening. Please be seated. And I trust everyone has had a moment to read our acknowledgement to the First Nations communities on the North Shore while you were waiting. And I also trust that members of the public may have heard the news today because it is a bit of a historic day in our community. Council had a special council meeting this morning at 10:00 a.m., at which time we unanimously passed the dedication of 1,932 acres of land above the highway as park in perpetuity. And that exciting news was joined by an announcement from our former member of council, Rod Day's son, Andy Day, who successfully brought the first contribution to the conservancy of $3 million to help fund the preservation of that area. So it's been a pretty great day in the community, and we're grateful for all of the people who, over all the years, have worked so diligently to encourage the preservation of this property and to recognize its significance both for our community but all of Metro Vancouver and beyond. So this evening, we're going to start with a public hearing, and this is largely to do with the provincial requirements to remove land use contracts. Mr. Chu, could you start the formalities?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will read out the public hearing procedure for the benefit of those in attendance tonight. Now, the council is convening this public hearing to consider and receive submissions regarding proposed official community plan bylaw number 4985-2018, amendment bylaw number 5301-2024, and proposed zoning bylaw number 4662-2010, amendment bylaw number 5321-2024, regarding Caulfield land use contract area and other land use contract sites. Anyone who believes that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaws will be heard and/or may provide a written submission, either in person or via email, to correspondence@westvancouver.ca. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views heard. Council members may ask questions of you following your presentation, but council's function during this public hearing is to listen to the views of the public and not to debate the proposed bylaws. After the public hearing has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations. Your only opportunity to comment on the proposed bylaws is during the public hearing. Council is not permitted to receive further submissions once council has closed the public hearing. Council has received documents which are available for the public to view. A hard copy of these may be obtained from myself, there's a binder right here, during the public hearing. The documents can also be viewed online at westvancouver.ca/news/notices. Please note that the online copy and binder copy of the documents will not include written submissions received after noon today. To maintain order and to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard, here are the rules of procedure. First, a speaker's list has been established. For those attending in person, you may place your name on the list at any time throughout the public hearing. The list is located at a table near the door. If you are speaking from prepared remarks, council requests that copy be provided to myself. To participate via WebEx, please phone 604-925-7004 and provide your name and telephone number to staff, who will add you to the speaker's list. When it is your turn to address council, staff will allow you to unmute your microphone and turn on your webcam in order to provide you with your public input opportunity. Please note that staff are not in a position to provide you with a specific time slot when you register to speak, so we ask that participants who wish to address council be available for the duration of the public hearing. Second, council requests that you please begin your remarks by providing your name and the municipality of your residence. If you're speaking on behalf of some other person or organization, council requests that you please identify the name of that person or organization. Third, please limit your remarks to five minutes and to the subject of the proposed bylaws. Please be respectful to others. And fourth, after everyone has spoken once, you will have an opportunity to speak subsequent times to provide additional information if you wish. Please follow the process outlined a moment ago to be re-added to the speaker's list. If you have any concerns with the rules of the hearing, pardon me, please address your comments to the chair. Mayor Sager, before we go over to the staff presentation, I should just let everyone know that council has received a total of two staff reports on this topic, and there are, as of this moment, 21 written submissions. Council has received them all. On April 29th of this year, council set the date for this public hearing. The statutory notice of public hearing was published in the North Shore News on May 15 and May 22. Any other comments?
Thank you very much. Mr. Bailey or Ms. Maguire, will you lead a presentation on this?
Yes, Maguire.
Ms. Maguire, thanks so much. And I need to tell members of the public, this was an enormous amount of work for our staff to address this change brought on by requirements of the provincial government when land use contracts were terminated by then. Ms. Maguire, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, members of the public. For consideration tonight are zoning amendment bylaw and official community plan amendment bylaw to provide replacement regulations for the expiring Caulfield land use contract, and then to propose other minor amendments for other land use contract sites across the district. So for the Caulfield area, what we're proposing is to rezone that area from the existing underlying zoning, which includes different single-family RS zones, to a new comprehensive development or CD zone. You can see the area on the map on the right-hand side of the screen. That map's an excerpt from the zoning bylaw, and it includes four main designated land use areas. So that includes two residential areas, the commercial area for the existing commercial shopping center, and a designation for the existing park and green space area that's publicly owned. So just a summary of what's included in the Caulfield zone. For the residential areas, the zoning amendments would ensure legal conformity for approximately 700 properties across the Caulfield area. The zoning reflects generally permitted district-wide residential zone uses and regulations. And with that, what I mean is that it includes additional land uses that would be permitted, things like childcare or home-based business or secondary suites, things that are allowed in other residential areas of the district. As well, the proposed zoning addresses potential impacts on neighborhood character using the site coverage and height limitations as set out in the land use contract, as well as addressing potential adjacency impacts for sites when they're redeveloping by using introduced setback requirements. There's another piece of this is that with the provincial housing legislation for small-scale multi-unit housing, the proposed maximum number of dwelling units is three per parcel. The reason for this is that that avoids creating what would be termed a restricted zone, which would require further amendment based on the provincial legislation. So that can be achieved through addition of secondary suites or dwellings that would be three units, ground-oriented dwellings. So that meets the provincial housing legislation regarding that. And then finally, in terms of the floor area ratio or the density that's included in the proposed zone, that's .35 FAR, and that aligns with other zones in the district that allow for single-family use where they don't have access to the density bonus provisions for secondary suites or coach houses, like is the case here. As well, just one thing to note about the floor area ratio with the land use contract, what was set up in the first place is when sites were subdivided and then greenbelt areas were dedicated, a portion of that greenbelt area was attributed to the site size, and that allowed for somewhat larger houses and somewhat larger site coverage. So that is included within the zone to be in keeping with the original land use contract regulations. But on top of that, we have included a house size maximum to avoid overly large houses being built when sites are coming forward for redevelopment. And the house maximum that we've introduced is 6,300 square feet. That's aligned with other single-family areas in the district that have similar site sizes as Caulfield does. And then for the commercial area, really that was more of a technical exercise to bring forward the regulations that exist in the land use contract today to bring them into the zone. And then finally, there's the parks and green space area designation in the land use map. What that does is it really brings forward the intent of the land use contract. One of the main tenets of that was to create these green spaces, greenbelt areas throughout the Caulfield area, and so that designation ensures that they remain in public use and keep that designation over time. One other thing we're also doing for Caulfield is proposing official community plan or OCP amendment, and that's doing two things. The first one is for the commercial sites. So what it would be doing is putting the existing commercial shopping center into what we call the local commercial sites development permit area. What that would do is it would apply the form and character guidelines that exist for other neighborhood-based commercial sites across the district to that existing shopping area. And then secondly, we're proposing to create a new ground-oriented housing development permit area for existing attached housing sites. There's a number of housing sites within Caulfield that are unique in that they are attached housing units where people own their own piece of land, but they're attached to their neighbor. So for those sites, you can see them mapped on the map, shown in blue there. One of the things that came up was concern about when sites are coming forward for redevelopment, how would that potentially impact their attached neighbors? And so what this development permit area does is it introduces guidelines that really are focused on mitigating any potential adjacency issues and neighborhood character issues for the immediate area surrounding sites that are being potentially redeveloped in the future. And then for the other land use contract sites where there's minor amendments proposed, these are really quite minor in nature, and it's basically introducing additional uses that were either needed to be added to align with the existing land use contracts or to reflect district-wide land use. And so that includes things like childcare, community care, accessory uses, home-based businesses, and things like that. And so that concludes the presentation. And subject to tonight's public hearing, staff are recommending that council give second and third reading to the bylaws as the proposed amendments meet relevant provincial legislation. They're consistent with council's direction to staff. They respond to neighborhood feedback received throughout the process. And for Caulfield specifically, they would ensure legal conformity for approximately 700 properties across that area. And for the other land use contract sites, they provide consistency with the land use contracts themselves and current district bylaws and regulations. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Maguire, thanks so much. And we'll now turn it over. Do we have a speaker's list as yet?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. We do have a speaker's list.
It's okay. I won't be offended.
I skipped a full term, too.
Yeah, he might have wanted it back, but he's not getting it, so.
I'll need some water in my glass. All right. Mayor Sager, thank you. We do have five names on our speaker's list. The first three will be from within the chamber, and then the next, the last two will be over WebEx. So the first speaker, please, Dorothy Byrne.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Yes, and thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor and members of council, to speak to you tonight in person. I wanted to take the opportunity to address two items that are in your report dated April 15 and have just been reviewed now by Michelle Maguire in her review. But they both relate to the cancellation of the land use contract by the province. First of all, yes, I'm Dorothy Byrne. I am the owner of property at 5162 Meadfield Road, one of the sites that's included in that new Caulfield Zone 86, as well as, and more specifically, within the new development permit area, I mean, the attached housing that will be governed by that new permit area, particularly the guidelines. As I said, I speak on my own behalf, although I have consulted with some of my neighbors, but I cannot claim to be speaking on their behalf. My main point tonight is that I am very supportive of the amending bylaws, both set out in what I have called Appendix B and then again in Appendix C. I do commend the staff for the opportunities they created for public input to ensure that there was a clear understanding at your side of what was important to the residents of the area. The subsequent bylaw, while it's complex, and I can only imagine how much work it has taken to develop that sort of bylaw, complex, challenging to understand, I do think that it essentially does the job. And I particularly want to thank Michelle Maguire for making herself available for follow-up questions for clarification. A few comments, and I'm watching the time, regarding Appendix B in particular. As I read it, it does reflect what was heard by the district staff at the public input process. Two items of particular importance to me that I think are captured, and I just want to make sure they're emphasized. Number one is what I call the grandfathering provisions, a grandfathering of the setbacks and the other structural limitations that were lawfully in place as of June 30, 2024. Important to me and to some of my neighbors that should a future owner or ourselves wish to rebuild or reconfigure their home, they will be allowed to do that, provided they adhere to the minimum and maximum measurements that applied to the lot as of June 30. Of particular concern here has been the risk of fire, especially given the amount of green space that we enjoy. It's comforting to know that we could rebuild if there was a terrible conflagration, even whether it be rebuild as is or with some reconfigurations within the current limits. Secondly, I'm particularly assured by the provisions in Appendix B that clearly limit the use of the green space and parks in the neighborhood to parks and playgrounds and park accessory uses. With respect to Appendix C, that is the new development permit area, it does set out some very comprehensive guidelines for building and landscape design for any new attached housing, and that would include rebuilds, renovations, and small additions to existing attached housing. There is a bit of ambiguity in the drafting, as I saw it, where they would be exempted if they were renovations and small additions, but again, only if the director concluded in his view they were compliant with the, generally compliant with the guidelines. So a bit of ambiguity there. But as comprehensive in the subject areas that those guidelines cover, they're very general and without the details on specifics. As I understand it, they will be, they are intended to be applied with flexibility for the particular circumstances, and as was said, intended to ensure that the new development, if there is any, integrates with existing site features and character of the area. I would have appreciated more precision on what that means, but for the time being, as I said, I very strongly support the adoption of this bylaw. One thing I do note is that that appendix that sets out those guidelines and the design, what they call the design and landscape guidelines, they were a surprise. They were not part of the earlier public engagement process, as far as I could tell. The first appearance was at page 155 of your April 15 report. Simply stated, the guidelines being so very comprehensive, I think, would have benefited from an opportunity for earlier input from the public. My final comment is with respect to the current state of green space and parks in the neighborhood. They are an important and integral part of what is so special about that new Caulfield Zone 86. I would say that their appearance and management is at least as important as the appearance and landscape designs that apply to our homes, which are captured in the guidelines. So I believe they're both critical to the unique and special character where we live in that neighborhood. So it seems to me these green spaces have not been adequately maintained over the last several years. My concern is not just with appearance, but also, and more importantly, the exposure to risk of fire.
That's time, ma'am.
I think you're pretty close to finishing, though.
I am. To that end, to that end, capture this, I suggest that the district gives some consideration to forming a landscape advisory committee composed of department or district staff as well as local homeowners. I believe there are several in my neighborhood who could help. Any precedents or thoughts that staff may have regarding this suggestion would be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very thoughtful comments. Appreciate the input.
Thank you, Mayor Sager. The next speaker is Habib Abizadeh.
Thank you. I am okay.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the third name, Martha Barazza.
Ms. Barazza. Thanks for joining us.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you very much. I'm here to talk about 1340 Duchess Avenue. It's a building that was built 44 years ago.
Just so you understand, that is part of the local area plan?
Yes.
That's, tonight, right now, this public hearing is dealing with the Caulfield land use.
Oh, okay. No, I'm.
But we are discussing the setting of a public hearing, which will impact on your property. It won't be likely until June 24th.
June 24th.
So you've come a bit early.
Okay. All right. Okay.
That's okay.
I welcome back June 24th. Thank you very much.
But it's subject to council's vote tonight. So please feel free to stay and make sure we do vote to send it to a public hearing.
Okay. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sager. That is the end of the list for people in the gallery. So with your leave, I'll move on to the WebEx list.
Thank you. But before I do that, could I just ask, are there other members of the public who are here this evening that wish to address council, who are in the galley? Let's, Ms. Jones, would you like to? And we're talking on the land use contract.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't really have too much to add because I'm late to this particular historic chapter. I was involved in 1992 through 1994, actually establishing the developments with the Martin Corporation and Bill Chapman and Mr. Russell. And from the outset, what was our strongest reason for reforming the Caulfield Repairers Association in 1991 or 1992, which involved Victor Durman and Tom Lager, Patrick Geach, and my ex-husband and I, and the pedestrian walkways between the enclaves of residential development was foremost what we worked hard at making sure was always carried through to the final signing off of that. And there very much was the expectation that those would remain as safe and comfortable alternatives to driving around Caulfield in your vehicle. And I understand through my limited exposure in the last 15, 20 years, actually, yeah, would be 30 years, actually, and the memory of that is me delivering, you know, up and down in Caulfield pamphlets for people to come out and.
And I remember those days, Ms. Jones. It's though it was yesterday.
I know. And it brought about my premature son, all those stairs. At the end of the day, his birth came five and a half weeks early. But I think the main crux of it is that we, together with the citizenry, I think would be a nice balance, together with staff, to have, in the same way as the Lighthouse Preservation Society does their Ivy Pools, et cetera. It would be nice to see a bit of team spirit, and it sounds like neighbors are ready and willing. So I think rather than just put it off to something, if we could concretely invite maybe a meeting in the next month or so for those people to come together to maintain the trailways.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Yes, I thought Ms. Byrne's suggestion was an excellent one, so.
Yes. Excellent. I'm seconding that.
Yeah. There we go. Is there anyone else here this evening before we go to the online people? And it'll sound like they're coming out of the sky when we do that. Anyone else here this evening that wishes to address council? Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to the WebEx.
Thank you, Mayor Sager. I did just promote Vida and Arneau Laurent. You should be able to unmute your microphone and turn on your webcam if you wish. You have five minutes to address council.
Hi. Good evening. Sorry. We, I think we came a little bit earlier, same as Martha, we come for the 1340 Duchess, which, as you said earlier, might actually happen later, next month.
Right. Thank you very much, sir. I do anticipate council will consider setting a public hearing on the Ambleside Local Area Plan, which would impact your property, so stay tuned. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good night. Okay. Mayor Sager, the last name on my list is Mohsen Haidari, and I'm going to promote that person right now to a panelist. Mohsen Haidari, you should be able to unmute your microphone now and your webcam if you wish. You have five minutes to address council. Mr. Haidari, you should be able to find an unmute button towards the bottom of your screen. If you unmute yourself, we can receive your submission.
We'll call one more time, and then we'll proceed.
Mr. Haidari, if you can unmute your microphone now.
Oh, here we go. Hello, sir.
I'm afraid you're muted, sir. You're on mute. Or your microphone is not working. We're not getting any audio from you.
No, sir, sorry. If you can hear me, I can't hear you. I'm feeling a little bit like watching our family's home movies back in the day. Sir, I'm really sorry. Could you try one more time?
So he's still online. I think he might just be trying to.
Could I just ask the other people that were here talking about 1340 Duchess, would this gentleman be also confused over the public hearing date? Does anyone know if he lives in that building?
I don't. Can you ask me?
Okay. We'll have to move on. I'm sorry, I don't want to ever exclude anyone.
Understood. Thank you, Mayor Sager. There are no more names on the speaker's list.
Okay. I'll call, yes, please, Counselor Thompson.
I just had a couple of questions based on Ms. Byrne's presentation. Again, some really great suggestions. You mentioned that the public engagement didn't seem to include the detailed design and landscape forum. Is there any opportunity still or now, if we move forward with this, to receive input now that they've seen the report on design and landscape?
Through the merit of Counselor Thompson, it is correct that this was something that was considered fairly late in the process in response to concerns that we received, specifically, as I said, about attached housing areas where redevelopment was coming forward and then just making sure that we got it right as far as mitigating, you know, adjacency issues, overlap, privacy, and that kind of thing. So we still feel like that is the best approach. I agree with Ms. Byrne that it would have been better to have public input into that. At this late stage, given the expiry of the contract that is coming up quite quickly, I think our recommendation, well, our recommendation is for council to consider these amendments now and in future when we're considering development permits through a staff, because we are proposing to delegate those to the director for consideration. You know, we could definitely come back with tweaks, changes as necessary if we felt that the guidelines were too stringent or if they weren't capturing certain elements that we felt were important. They are really meant to be flexible in their application. It's quite different than a zoning bylaw, where the guidelines are meant to be applied. You know, and the intent for these ones is really just about adjacency and the immediate surrounding of the site. So we can definitely come back and tweak as necessary.
Great. And my next question's twofold a little bit. There's a lot of concern around the green space and, like you say, the greenery around the place that they enjoy so much. So currently, what is the process around their landscaping and designs? And I wasn't sure if you were referring to a committee around landscaping the greenways or actual personal homes?
Greenways.
Okay. So is, what's that process right now?
So right now, that's, well, it is a responsibility of the Parks Department, and so that would continue. And if council was to consider something like the suggestion where maybe there's something more formalized with the Caulfield area with resident group, that could be something that doesn't necessarily have to happen today, because it doesn't have to be connected to the decision around zoning and the official community plan bylaw amendments. And so that, just to put that out there, that could be a separate consideration with park staff, you know, bringing. a separate consideration with park staff, you know, bringing forward information about their process for how they go about the, you know, maintenance of the vast areas of green space that are their responsibility across the district. As I understand it, though, just at a high level, they use the Parks Master Plan to guide their work in terms of, of how they're going forward and maintaining and upkeeping parks across the district. So hopefully that answers your question.
And, and I will just say to Ms. Byrne and anyone else who's interested in this, you know, we do have a number of really effective community advocacy groups, and it does take a real commitment on behalf of a, a number of members. So if you can somehow organize that in your areas, they can be really effective, but it's, it's a big job.
Thanks very much. I'm going to call for one final time, make sure everybody's had an opportunity to address council. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this public hearing? Hearing none. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing? Moved by Counselor Watt, seconded by Counselor Thompson. A call to question, all in favor? Contrary carried. And again, Ms. McGuire, our sincere thanks for truly an outstanding job, a huge undertaking with a complex land use contract. We'll now move to the regular council meeting. If I could have a motion to approve the council agenda, Counselor Cassidy.
Sorry, just a moment here. I move that the May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four regular council meeting agenda be amended by adding item six point one regarding Ambleside Local Area Plan apartment areas, proposed modified official community plan bylaw amendment, proposed zoning bylaw amendment, and rental replacement and tenant assistant policy, and that the agenda be approved as amended.
Thank you, Counselor Watt. Seconded, question, all in favor? Contrary carried, thank you. Adoption of the minutes, Counselor Snyder.
Yes, I'd like to direct amend that the minutes of May twen, uh, May sixth, twenty-twenty-four special open session and regular council meetings and public hearing, and the May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four special open session and regular council meetings be adopted as circulated, and the summary of the May sixth, twenty-twenty-four public hearing regarding proposed zoning bylaw number four-six-six-two, twenty-ten, amendment by law number five-three-two-eight, twenty-twenty-four, to enhance retail diversity be approved.
Second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Question, all in favor? Contrary carried. Item number four, Counselor Thompson.
Okay, are we gonna, um...
We're not, we're gonna pass on a presentation tonight. This is a simple sidewalk approval.
So should I bring this one forward, or just...
I would, shall I read out a proposed resolution?
Yeah.
Mayor Sager, I apologize for the interruption. We do have one member of the public, at least one member, that has signed up to speak to this item. I don't know if you'd rather wait till the motions on the floor, I just wanted to let you know before we proceed too far.
Okay. The, the motion that will, that I would recommend we proceed with is that the May first, twenty-twenty-four report titled Sidewalk Programming be received for information, and that the two, the proposed twenty-twenty-four sidewalk projects slated for Marine Drive in the Cypress Park area be endorsed, and that staff work with council at a workshop to consider further sidewalk prioritization projects. That would be the motion I would...
We're not just getting rid of two, okay.
So, Counselor Thompson, are you comfortable with that motion?
I, yeah...
If you're not, Counselor Lambert says he is.
Okay, you go ahead. Okay, we're good. So, um...
You'll make that motion then?
Sure.
And then we'll ask for members of the public. So that's moved, and Counselor Snyder, seconded? Oh, sorry, Counselor Watt.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, right, Counselor Watt, I apologize. And now could we hear from whoever it is in the public who wishes to address council?
Thank you, Mayor Sager. Shirley Anthony is the only person signed up for this item.
Thank you. Hello, Ms. Anthony, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. It's my first time attending, and it's been really interesting. Thank you very much for, Pascal, for this opportunity to present as well. I'm actually here because of one area, Wildwood Lane. I, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm Shirley Anthony. I live at the bottom of British Properties. My children both go to Westcott Elementary. We live just about five minutes away from the school. It's been wonderful being able to be that close to the school where we can walk our children. However, there is a section of road along Wildwood Lane that I see young children, teenagers, adults, old, you know, senior citizens that are walking along this road. And cars are permitted to park in perpetuities for as long as they ha, as they want along the southern portion of this road. We've actually seen and reported a car that was abandoned there that had vines growing on it. And our concern is that cars are able to park there with half of their vehicles sticking out onto the actual road. The dirt, the dirt path there, it pretty much acts as a safe sidewalk for pedestrians. However, because of the fact that cars are allowed to park there, and there are tons that park there particularly over the ski season, because they all, I guess, carpool to go up to the mountains, to go skiing. And so what we see is just lines of cars parked, many jutting out into the road so that people have to walk literally in the middle of the road as we have fast cars passing by us, trying to get to the school, trying to get to Saint David's Church, trying to get to the bus stop in front of Saint David's Church. Now, I reached out to the Department of Engineering back in March. I received a very helpful response that they were looking into the situation. I also called the number, and I spoke with Jennifer, I'm not sure if there's Jennifer here. And she was very understanding at the time, and she said that there was an opportunity for them to conduct an audit, to visit the area. They obviously don't live there. My family and I have lived there for over three years now, and it's been sort of a source of concern on a daily basis. When I've conferred with neighbors, they were, they have, all have stories to share, and they've said that they've reached out, they just, or they didn't know who to reach out to. And so after a few months, you know, there's, obviously they're busy, I followed up, and two weeks ago, the response is, we're not going to do anything because we have a limited budget and there's so many requests for sidewalks. And my concern is, we already have an existing sidewalk. And in fact, there's the other side of the road where there are restrictions, a two-hour restriction on parking, and nobody parks on that side. If we were allowed to just move those signs, like, it would involve very little cost to move those to our restriction signs to the opposite side of the road, it would essentially free up that entire path down Wildwood Lane. And there's already an existing path, pardon me, further down the lane, where it would just create this continuous walking path for pedestrians to get to the school and the church and to the bus stop.
That's time, thank you.
Oh.
That's okay. If you, were you close to finishing?
Yes, pretty much. I'm hoping that the engineering department would reconsider their response, that there's nothing that they can do, because it is truly a safety concern for us.
Thank you very much. And the, the motion tonight will allow members of council the opportunity to work with the staff
Okay.
further on that, so...
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any further questions? Any discussion from members of council? Okay, I'll call a question, all in favor? Contrary, the motion is carried. Item number five, Bridge Management Update. Ms. Mullery, is there a report to, on this, for members of the public? If you haven't been online and seen the enormous amount of work that these two have put into this bridge management report, it's really impressive and quite incredible. So I can't imagine you could give a presentation on all this tonight, though.
Well, good evening, mayor and council, and members of the public, and, and thank you, Mayor Sager, for your kind words. So we don't have a presentation this evening. Essentially, the purpose of the report was to provide council with an update on the approach being taken towards a condition assessment, maintenance, and reinvestment planning of the transportation-related major structures within the district's road network. So just noting that our assessment in this report is in relation to vehicular bridges. It doesn't consider bridges that are form part of our pedestrian networks or trail networks. And just to briefly summarize, so the district has fifteen of these structures, and in addition to that, we've got three peer structures with a combined value of about seventy-three million dollars in twenty-twenty-three dollars. And so as an asset owner, we're just really recognizing the significance of the structures in respect of their criticality, their complexity, and value, along with in combination of evolving standards and rehabilitation methods that are available to us. So in light of that, staff have developed a bit of an updated inspection and maintenance programming approach that lends itself to informing longer-term rehabilitation and replacement programming, along with identifying supporting investment needs. And so we're just, the, the purpose of the report is really to make council aware of the work and members of the public and seek endorsement in terms of proceeding on the basis of, of this sort of ass, asset management path and, and funding approach, what we've id, which we've identified as being essentially just by request through annual budgetary processes. So if, if there's any questions, happy to try and answer them, but that, that's it.
Ms. Mullery, and, and I think any member of the public who takes the time to read this incredibly detailed report can only be thankful and impressed at the close attention you're paying and your staff are paying to our, these vital assets. It, it really is quite outstanding. Counselor Cassidy, could I ask you to put forward a motion?
It is recommended the May first, twenty-twenty-four report titled Bridge Asset Management Update be received for information. Number two, the Bridge Asset Management Strategy be endorsed by council, and number three, transportation-related major structure and bridge asset funding requirements continue to be funded through the annual capital budgeting process.
Thank you, Counselor Snyder. Any discussion? I'll call a question, all in favor? Contrary carried, thanks again. Thank you very much. Item number six, Eagle Island Access Infrastructure, Counselor Watt.
Sorry, there, is there a presentation for this, or no?
There is one that's been prepared, but I mean, the report is fairly self-explanatory. I'm happy to, just a verbal overview.
Maybe a very quick, just for the benefit of those who are with us.
Sure, sure. So Eagle Islands, the access is provided for roughly twenty-four of those residents through means of a district-owned but public series of piers and docks. And in addition to that, there's a parking lot that supports, or is provided for resident access. And, and so those, the sort of vessel mortgage and parking allows for access to the island for those residents. And currently, the district doesn't have the ability to regulate either of, of those sort of infrastructure structures. And so staff are simply recommending that council direct us to prepare a bylaw that would consider a permitting scheme along with some regulatory enforcement pieces and report back to council with that for consideration no later than end of Q3. I think in terms of members of the public, it's just, I, I would note that more recently we've, we being staff, have, have heard from members of the public that there's concern that this sort of like social contract that exists in terms of the arrangement of vessel mortgage is, is being, I guess, breached. So historically, there's one vessel per household, and I, I gather in some instances, that's, there's some deviation from that. And so, again, just defaulting back to, we don't currently have a regulatory means or mechanism, so that's why we're proposing a bylaw.
Thank you. Counselor Watt, or Counselor, well, you're, you're still on red, so...
Who am I?
Sorry, Counselor Cassidy?
So in layman's language, this means that should this bylaw be approved, we would then have the legal wherewithal to tell each of those residents living on that island that they are entitled to exactly a specific number of barges, and that is it. So should they have two or three barges, we would be able to say to them, excuse me, you're entitled to one barge, and bye-bye to the other one or the other two.
Through the mayor to Counselor Cassidy, given the capacity constraints of the existing dock footprints, staff would be recommending that one mortgage slip per household would be available.
All right.
And you're quite correct in that that would, that a bylaw would allow us to enforce that.
All right. And how would we enforce it? By way of fines? How would we enforce it?
We haven't drafted the bylaw yet, but I would anticipate it would be by way of, of fines, potentially towing, if we want to go that route.
All right, because when you...
And happy to receive, if there's feedback from council in that regard, I'm happy to sort of take that away.
Great, great, because we have received quite a bit of correspondence on, on this subject. And when you live in an island, you just hope that, you know, you're all harmonious in, in your living arrangements. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Watt?
Yeah, but just before I move, I want to comment. I would be very supportive of towing or removal if a fine, an initial fine, doesn't work, like enough's enough, it's been going on too long. So on that note, I would like, like to recommend that staff prepare a bylaw designated to regulate the use of the district's public access and dock infrastructure for Eagle Island and bring forward at an upcoming regular council meter, meeting no later than Q3, twenty-twenty-four, for consideration. And the bylaw include conditions of use and enforcement measures, a permit, permitting scheme for vessel mortgage and a user fee to be applied with vessel mortgage permitting.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy? Thank you. Yes?
We do have some members of the public sign up to speak to this item.
Thank you.
I believe a total of eight.
Thank you.
The first name on the list is Alex Byer, followed by Pierre Lebel.
Thank you. Sorry, it was Mr.?
Byer.
Mr. Byer, thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you. I'm speaking, my name is Alex Byer. I'm a resident of Eagle Island and of course, West Vancouver. I've lived there since two thousand and ten with my two children who are now not, yes, nine and eleven, I'll get in trouble if I get that wrong.
Yes, you will.
So I am the, on the executive council of the Eagle Island Residents' Association. And I just, we had at our last AGM, I just want to read the unanimously passed motion regarding this very issue. That was to request to the council, quote, "Respecting the docking of barges on Eagle Island and mainland docks, only one barge from any legal law on Eagle Island is permitted on both or either of the Eagle Island and mainland docks at any time." As was sort of mentioned before, there, you know, when, when I moved on to the island, it was very clearly explained to me that there is a barge, and there's generally a rowboat that each household will have. The barge is obviously much more desirable to go in, go across. Everybody who's lived there has gone across on their, their rowboat with their groceries in the rain, if their partner or their children are on the other side and you're on one side. It's something that we all, is both, you know, the worst thing and the best thing about living on Eagle Island. It's something that we all have agreed to, to endure, in quotation marks. That is the benefit that we get on living in this area with no cars, with wildlife right at our front door. It's very quiet, it's wonderful. And we very much would prefer not to be coming to council, asking you to regulate our existence there, that this is, as, as you mentioned before, something that's been going on for years. We would much rather just be able to go back and forth on our own without your, be honest, without your participation. This has become an issue over time. There's clearly not the capacity to have extra barges there. If you believe in the existence of low tide, you can, you can see that, that we are at or beyond the maximum currently as it is. And then there's also, of course, the issue of fairness, that if one household arbitrarily gets a second barge, if everybody were to do that, then nobody would have parking there. So that, we still have time. That's, that's really it. Just, I was very heartened to hear the comments before we started speaking here, that we would very much like to have this resolved and be able to move on. I think that the residents are, I can speak for myself, are tired of going on about this. Is, it's a lot, it's causing a lot of friction on the island. There are people who are not speaking anymore because of this issue. Having this resolved, meaning a move forward, just operationally would be very helpful, and just from a healing perspective would also be very helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Byer.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. The next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Pierre Lebel, followed by Pat Hindley.
Mr. Lebel. Thank you for joining us, sir.
Thank you. My, my name is Pierre Lebel. My wife Betty and I have lived at Fifty-Eight-Thirty Eagle Island for the last fourteen or fifteen years. I, I'm only here to thank you for considering this matter, to support what Alex has said, and hopefully that you'll be able to work with the Eagle Island Residents' Association when you're drafting this bylaw. I think that's really all I need to say, so thank you. I think that's really all I need to say, so thank you.
Thanks for joining us, Mr. Lebel. Thank you, sir. The next speaker.
The next speaker is Pat Hindley, followed by Paul Geddis.
Um, Ms. Hindley? Ms. Hindley, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Pat Hindley. I live at 5834 Eagle Island and, um, I'm here today to express my thanks to Mayor and Council for considering this, um, idea of a, um, of a bylaw. Uh, it means an enormous amount to me because this issue has been going on for a long time. And quite honestly, we're all a bit exhausted. So thank you very much indeed. I've been on Eagle Island for 40 years. In all that time dictated both by the geography of the island and navigable channel restrictions, there's been a well-understood rule by all residents in the city that there is to be one barge per household. As navigation in the channel has increased extensively, as families on the island have expanded and as first responders have long been restricted to their own access vessel, the level of resident concern for safety and access has risen to the point of requiring the legality of a bylaw, not unlike the Eagle Island parking bylaw. The above statement is not new. In one form or another, it goes back 10 years as the issue has escalated in degrees of site-specific privilege, from building variance to subdivision and the bringing in of a second barge without notification of Eagle Island residents or comment from the city. It would not matter to me which family it was, it's the principle of the issue that matters, the deviation from fair and equitable treatment of all residents and the seeming disregard for safety first. There should be no case for grandfathering in the offending second and oversized barge. The rule of one barge per household has been made known to all current and past residents since at least 1982 at the time of lot purchase. To do that would again create privilege. Similarly, family size is a personal choice, it does not assume the privilege of a second barge in any case. In my time here, two families have each successfully raised their four children with only one barge. Eagle Island has created an independent island safety committee to educate and inform all islanders. It is a welcome addition to island safety for us all. However, one thing it has no control over is the essential barge access to and from the island. Twice last fall and winter around 7:30 in the evening, I was unable to dock at the island. I had to tie up to an outside barge and climb through the rails to access the dock. Not a pretty sight. I was observed from somebody who lives in the cliff above me.
That's tough.
In wind and rain, that is not an easy task. I believe we have all a right to dock safely on either side of the channel at all times, as should be the case for emergency vehicles. Over the decade, this issue has come before one council or another necessitating considerable preparatory work and responses in writing and in person at council meetings. Despite the fact that the island majority in opposition has prevailed every time, we are back at the table again. I hope that this is perhaps the year when council and staff finally provide the island with the fair and equitable bylaw protection it needs to remain safe, secure, and accessible all at all times for residents and essential services. Sir Mayor and Council, I would like to read just a short paragraph from a letter that I wrote to, uh, Jim Bailey on January 8th.
Ms. Hindley, sorry, we're just over time.
Have I gone over time?
You have, but it is, how quick is it?
I'm sorry?
How quick is your, uh, final remarks? How, how quick can you?
I could, I should continue?
Well, how quickly would it ta- how long would it take?
Um, by the time I've told you with the time, calculated the time, it will be way over my time.
Okay, well, let's do it quickly then. I don't, we, we do ask people to stick to the time, but-
The reason I want to present it is that it has historical consideration. So is that okay?
Really quickly.
Okay, really short, all right. Uh, I moved on to the island in May 83. Apart from minor disagreements, its residents have lived in a highly cohesive and mutually supportive community. In 83, Eagle Island had a much smaller wooden municipal dock. New residents were immediately informed of two main rules, namely allocation of only one car parking space and one barge space per property. So that is what was in existence in 1982. It's never been changed, we've all adhered to it, it's worked remarkably well until recently.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much indeed, Mayor and Council.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker on the list is Paul Geddis, uh, followed by Betty Lebel.
Mr. Dennis, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Paul Geddis. I-
Oh, Geddis, Mr. Geddis. Thank you.
I live at, uh, 5588 Eagle Island and I appreciate Mayor and Council for the opportunity to speak in support of the motion tonight. I will speak just very briefly, but I just wanted to reiterate what Pat said regarding, um, what she had to do and others have had to do, uh, when there is no more space left at the dock. If all the barge spots are full, that last barge in it, that night maybe happens 10 or 20 times a year, they have to mark more to, not to the dock directly, but to another barge. And what that means is, all the barges have railings on them to stop you from falling off the side of the barge. So that means you have to climb, and if I may, climb over something about as high as this railing here, um, and then there's another railing beside on the next barge. You have to climb over that or through it. There's waves, some wavy nights, I think, but Pat had to do it, it was quite a stormy night. It's dark out, there's railings crashing together, you're either going through them or over them, over water to get safely home. So, um, it's not a safe situation currently and, uh, we would very much appreciate, uh, Mayor and Council's, uh, help in, and staff's help in, uh, correcting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geddis.
Thank you. The next speaker is Betty Lebel, followed by Jim Ox.
Ms. Lebel, thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Betty Lebel and I've been a resident at 5830 Eagle Island for almost 15 years. I'd like to first thank, like to thank Mayor and Council for recognizing the infrastructure issues on Eagle Island, as evidenced by its efforts to have the Eagle Island community exempted from the new provincial legislation on densification. The staff report on infra- (applause). The staff report on infrastructure for Eagle Island indicates that there is no excess mortgage capacity on both the mainland and island docks based on the number of households on Eagle Island. As a matter of fact, this afternoon, there were eight spaces available on the mainland dock with 10 barges on the island dock that could at any time need to find mortgage on the mainland dock. It was low tide and at least two of those eight spots were not usable. So yes, there is indeed no excess mortgage capacity and we are in fact, beyond that. There exists a decades-long, as several people have mentioned already, a decades-long agreement among users of the island docks that barges are limited to one barge per household. However, in 2021, a resident purchased a second barge. Currently, there's nothing in writing that prevents a resident from owning multiple barges. We have until now been guided by common sense and common courtesy. As desirable as a second barge may be, residents have accepted that it is not possible an Eagle Island would become a completely dysfunctional community if everyone acquired a second barge. For decades, families have raised children, commuted to work, and managed all the activities of daily life with a single barge per legal lot. The district of West Kent Vancouver docks serving Eagle Island were never intended for individual homeowners to take as much space as they wanted. Perhaps, perhaps it was naive to think no formal rules were required and that all residents would continue to be respectful of others and the long-established understanding associated with usage of the docks. Regretfully, we must now reach out to the municipality to resolve this matter through some action that formalizes the number of existing and future barges for residents, limiting that number to one per household. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lebel. And, uh, yes, sir, uh, the next speaker.
Jim Ox, followed by Terry Duncan, and the last name on the list is John Owen.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, sir.
All right. Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. Uh, my name is Jim Ox, Mayor and Council. Thanks for listening to what I have to say tonight.
Thank you.
My wife Jackie and I live at 5861 Eagle Island and we have been there 19 years. I think we moved in on May 27th, in fact. Um, so we support a bylaw, and more specifically, one that would ensure that the district dock usage is limited such that each legal lot on Eagle Island may park only one barge at a district-owned dock at one time. Uh, Jackie and I live directly across from the mainland dock and adjacent to the island municipal dock, and it gives us a special perspective. Every day, we see people going back and forth and for decades, they've been doing it with one barge and one rowboat, sometimes two rowboats, but that's not a problem. So tonight, I really want to emphasize a few points. To me, or to Jackie and I, um, this is really an issue about equity. One Eagle Island lot should not be advantaged over all the others and be allowed to have two barges. If everybody did that, there just wouldn't be enough space. This is not an issue about need. Need is subjective and can change. Anybody could argue that they need a second barge, but no one should expect that council and staff could develop, uh, a policy to legislate need. A permitting system could be a simple and very minimum cost way to regulate dock usage. Things like building bigger docks or dredging or installing a ferry system or sharing barges. You know, these ideas are distractions to the problem that we have right now. Any of those ideas would have very high costs and they're complicated, and this is a very simple problem that we're dealing with. The district has no legal or moral obligation to respect grandfathering of the offending second barge. It really needs to go, and it really needs to go before regulations are put on everybody I'd like to add that the second barge that was added, it's bigger than all the other ones. It's about six inches wider than the biggest barges and about 10 to 12 inches bard- wider than most of them. And this really exacerbates the offense here. Um, you've heard a lot tonight that there's not enough dock space, but even if everybody had one barge that was the dimensions of this new barge, even with one barge, there wouldn't be enough dock space. So we know why they, we know why the family bought a second barge, they have a growing family, but I just can't understand why they bought a jumbo barge. It was unnecessary and it really shows a lack of regard. Jackie and I would prefer that Eagle Island was off the radar. To ask for regulation is, sounds like a crazy thing, but it, it has got to that point. And, uh, finally, we have our peculiar issues of access. It's not like other neighborhoods, so development of any bylaw hopefully can be done with a lot of input from the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ox.
The last two speakers are Terry Duncan, followed by John Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Terry Duncan and I live at 5822 Eagle Island. My partner and I have lived there for seven years. I'll keep this short. Having listened to the last discussions, I should say that I wholeheartedly agree with that. Couple of points. If there is to be a clause, and I hope there will be, limiting one barge per legal lot, I would, uh, have it read something like this. Without exception, these docks are intended for the exclusive use of Eagle Island residents who may berth no more than one barge per legal lot at any time on any of the district docks. Such barge to be sized to fit within the, to fit within the mooring, mooring stanchions fixed to the docks. Um, other than that, uh, as I say, I'm, uh, happy that the others have brought up subjects and I wholeheartedly agree with them. Thank you for your time this evening, much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. And we have a final speaker?
John Owen.
Mr. Owen, please. Thank you for joining us this evening, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. A great deal has been spoken and mentioned tonight regarding how our life, living, um, lifestyle is on the island. It is marvelous. I've never been, I'm an architect by trade. I've lived in many environments, urban and, and, um, in the country. Before I passed away, I'm getting up there now, I've never been in anywhere so beautiful. It's the closest thing to heaven, if you want to call it that. Every day I wake up, but as everyone has mentioned previously, it has been miserable for the last two years. When the, when the barge, second barge was brought into, into operation, without any discussion with any neighbors at all or council, because you guys own the actual dock, no one knew anything, just arrived, like an alien spaceship. But anyways, um, since then, um, numerous people, as some have stood, stood up and mentioned the difficulties. I just want to, I, I have a whole written thing here, I'm not going to even talk about this, it's all details, as architects can be, Peter. Um, as late as May 10th last, just recently, I was trying to head out with my partner, Terry Duncan, for a medical appointment. It was at 2:15 in the afternoon, we get on our barge, we go across, it's low tide, it's a king low tide. We're trying to find a place, there was three people trying to, once, two of us were trying to go to the mainland and one lady, she's in her 70s, was trying to get off on the east side of the mainland dock. The tide was so low, she couldn't start her boat, put her engine down, couldn't start it because it bottomed out. She, it was a fast incoming tide, winds from the southwest, she couldn't control it and she had one paddle. She had a paddle 20 feet to get into open water, to put her motor down to get back to the island. That was her problem. Terry and I were coming across, we're trying to find a place, there's no spots at all. So what Terry had to do, I said, Terry, forget it, don't bother coming, back, come to the back, you know, rear, go into the rear end of one docked barge. I had to climb over the engine, over the railing, like, like, like Paul did, showing you how it actually works, and get onto the next barge to get on the land. We had items to take off the barge, we could not take those items off because we couldn't carry it over. That was broad daylight, beautiful sunny afternoon, low tide, swift current, tide coming in. It was hell. This is the second time it's happened to me. Now, we're fortunate, we are away for six months each year in the, in the, you know, the deep of winter. Our barge, we dock our barge in the worst spot possible for the six months we're away. We put it very close to the municipal barge. So no one can use that spot. We park it, there's a courtesy to all our neighbors. We take our rowboat out of the water and store it on our property so that that's not taking out of space. That's called courtesy in being a neighbor. I just want to thank you and give you an example, okay? I'm 72 years old, I'm touched with it, I'm still healthy, but it was not, I was really, really upset that somebody would look beyond anyone else, else's rights or well-being. We help, we help everybody on the island. It's a, it's a community which you haven't seen, I haven't seen since when I was a kid in the 50s, and it's wonderful. 90, 90% of us great, get along well. Unfortunately, that's changed, and that's why I would like to put forth, as anybody else here, please put in place a new bylaw to control this. I don't want, we don't want this, but it's essential so we can get back to living our lives safely. And it's a life safety issue and a liability issue possibly for the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ox.
Much appreciated.
Thank you. I, I, I must tell you, for those of you who may not know, uh, I had the great fortune of living on Eagle Island from 19- living on Eagle Island from 1979 to 1982, and I think fondly about my trips back and forth on the barge.
You should tell some of them.
Well, the only problem, and perhaps some of you have heard the story, you see, I had a barge that was just a little too small.[616.91][616.91][laughter] And that became a problem. On one winter night, I had just been elected the Chair of the West Van School Board, and I wanted to have a party for my trustees, who showed confidence in me. And so, we had a black tie dinner party at my house on Eagle Island, and it was such great fun. It was December 21st. It was a cold winter night.[643.79][643.79][laughter] Well, the barge didn't do very well getting the people off the island, and we ended up swimming.[652.54][652.54][laughter] And Denny Boyd was a columnist in the Vancouver Sun, and he heard about the story, and he wrote about it, and it got picked up all across Canada. And one of my friends in Ontario wrote to me, sent me a copy of the article in the Ontario newspaper about this event, this swimming event on December 21st, and my friend jokingly said, "How do I get invited to your parties?"[680.58][680.58][laughter] So, I relate to the barges very much. Members of council, Discussion Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to make a comment. I am, you know, I'm happy to, well, first of all, I actually really enjoyed all the access imagery. It's, it's been very entertaining, you know?[698.51][698.51][laughter] It's great. And I'm happy to support this. I just, I'm probably as frustrated as you that we have to be here to enforce it, and I don't know why, with a residents' association, you can't have the power to enforce these community rules. And I'm sure you've all been through this, and you know why we're here tonight, but it is really a shame that we have to go to this level to enforce a social construct. So, yeah.[725.82][725.82][applause]
Thank you. Counselor Watt.
Just a quick question. So, one of the speakers, three or four speakers ago, mentioned the size of this new second barge being bigger, and I'm wondering, is it something that should be in that bylaw where the size is no greater than?
The suggestion, there is a natural stanchion size.
Okay.
And that's, that's what.
Okay.
Thank you.
Through the mayor to Counselor Watt. So, we anticipate regulating the size of the barges. That would, I mean, that's, yeah, we, the expansion piece.
Okay. We don't get a really big barge.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Cassidy.
So, over the, over the course of the last two years, since the arrival of this second barge by this particular household, has the district been involved in any form of policing or enforcement measure with this household to require them to remove the second barge? Or has it been left solely to the, shall we say, the, the social contract that exists on the island, and is this the first time we are being asked to step up to the plate and act as an enforcement agency?
Through the mayor to Counselor Cassidy. So, there is no enforcement mechanism right, right now, so that essentially, it's a public dock. I mean, we've acknowledged that it's primarily for the exclusive use of island residences, but we have no means to police it or enforce it by way of, of bylaw. So, that's, we have heard this and, and in dialogue with residents, as I understand, staff have, have reached out to the owners of the second barge, sort of in an explanation and requesting that they remove it, but we don't really have a mechanism to kind of mandate its removal.
Thank you. So, this council has the wherewithal to be as punitive in our language as possible to ensure that this bylaw is enforced.
Through the mayor to Counselor Cassidy. We'll be sure to provide you with some options in terms of enforcement measures as part of the bylaw.
Right. Thank you. And I would like to lean towards the side of punitive. Thank you.
Noted.
All right. We have a motion before us. Do we move and second it? Could I call the question? All those in favor? Contrary, the motion is carried. Thanks very much for all your input.[901.73][901.73][applause] Could we move now to item 6.1, the Ambleside Local Area Plan? Counselor Snyder.
Yes. Now, David, there's not, is there's not a report?
No, there's, there's no report on this this evening. We've had, we've had a report.
I'll, I'll make the, the change in the date when I read out.
You could move the motions as written in the public hearing. Well, no, I think you better read out each motion.
I think each motion has because of the way it's laid out, so.
Could we do that? Could we do them one by one?
Yep. I'd like to recommend that opportunities for consultation on the proposed official community plan amendment with persons, organizations, and authorities, as outlined in May 17th, 2024, report from the senior management, manager of community planning and sustainability be endorsed as sufficient consultation for purposes of Section 475 of the Local Government Act.
Thank you. Counselor Lambert, could I ask you to second that? Thank you. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? Contrary, carried. Thank you, Counselor Snyder.
I'd like to recommend that the proposed official community plan bylaw number 4985-2018, amendment bylaw number 5291-2024, be modified as described in Appendix A of the May 17th, 2024, report from the senior manager of community planning and sustainability.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Lambert, thank you. Counselor Thompson's back. Perhaps she could pick up on the next motion. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? Contrary, carried. Thank you. Counselor Snyder.
I'd like to recommend that the proposed official community plan bylaw number 4985-2018, amendment bylaw number 5291-2024, be read a second time as modified.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
Second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? Contrary, carried. Thank you.
I'd like to recommend that the proposed zoning bylaw number 4662-2010, amendment bylaw number 5338-2024, be read for a first time.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Contrary, carried. Thank you. Counselor Snyder.
I'd like to recommend that the proposed official community plan bylaw number 4985-2018, amendment bylaw number 5291-2024, and proposed zoning bylaw number 4662-2010, amendment bylaw number 5338-2024, be presented at a public hearing on June 24th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the municipal hall, council chambers, and via electronic communications facilities, WebEx video conferencing software, and that the notice be given of the scheduled public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Thompson. Question? All in favor? Contrary, carried. Thank you.
And I'd like to recommend that the proposed rental replacement and tenant assistance policy 0164, attached as Appendix D to the May 17th, 2024, report from the senior manager of community planning and sustainability, be received for information, and that staff consult with the Ambleside Tenant Association regarding the terms of the policy, and report back to council within thirty to sixty days with amendments for council's consideration.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Thank you. I'll call the question. All in favor? Contrary, carried. All of those motions, ladies and gentlemen, set a public hearing for the Ambleside Local Area Plan that we have been working very hard to, to find consensus on, and we will discuss it further on June 24th. I'll now turn to bylaws. Counselor Thompson.
Counselor Cassidy, were you going to move these?
Well, nobody wants to move these.[1159.73][1159.73][laughter] Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a point of clarification.
Yes.
The date for the public hearing, is it June, it's June 17th?
June 24th.
Okay.
Yeah. They changed it.
Sorry. Counselor Cassidy.
I just wanted to explain to staff the reasons behind the, the change from the 17th through 24th. It did take up a bit of discussion within our council chambers and our council session previously, and it's to give the public a far more opportunity to basically understand the lay of the land, understand what you're proposing, and give their comments as to whether or not they will agree with you. Good luck, or whether they won't. Okay? Super. Thank you.
Thank you. The next bylaws are brought on pursuant to the requirements by the provincial government. If any member of council wishes to speak to these, we would need a motion on the floor.
Still moved.
So, we'll take that as, moving the motions as written. Is there a second? Seconded discussion. Here we go. I'm anticipating a bit of interesting discussion on this.
Yeah, I've written, you'll have to suffer through me reading because I want to get this right. So, I'm not an agent of the federal government, and I don't represent the province. I was voted in by the citizens of West Vancouver, and I'll continue to represent their best interests. I'll vigorously oppose any entity that seeks to destroy the nature and character of our community. The province has been challenging the basic principles of democracy. They're treating private property as though it was their own, and moving at a reckless pace as they paint a broad-brush stroke across the province. I don't recall a time in Canadian history where we've seen such egregious policies raining down from above. The blanket rezoning mandated by Bill 44 abolishes the local planning process and ignores decades of careful decision-making made by those who understand and represent their municipalities. Ironically, it placed directly into the hands of developers and speculators. Canada's a democratic nation. Our unelected premier has not called a referendum. He hasn't invited the citizens to vote to shift the municipal planning decision-making process to the province. Instead, our premier, who again was not elected by the people, is ramming legislation through at an alarming speed. This needs to be stopped in its tracks before we no longer recognize our cities and province. The citizens of West Vancouver didn't choose to open the floodgates to more than one million permanent and temporary residents a year. We didn't choose to have the housing crisis downloaded onto our backs. We're a green, desirable community, and a sanctioned reckless densification in inappropriate locations will alter our community in perpetuity. There will be no going back. The increasing normalization and acceptance of the NDP's overarching policies are a slap in the face to all who support democracy. All across the province, like lemmings, we're walking off the cliff. I implore the rest of council to think very carefully before approving the rezoning of any neighborhood in West Van under force by an autocratic provincial government. That's what I have to say.[1381.23][1381.23][applause]
Thank you, Counselor Watt. Any further discussion? Counselor Cassidy.
Well, I will be short on words. I've already made my comments on the situation in the last two council meetings. Under no circumstances would I ever vote in favor of Bill 44. No, thank you. This is a democratic country, and this individual who wishes to impose this upon us has absolutely no comprehension of government at a municipal level. I would not in any size, shape, or form ever support this bill. Thank you.[1418.23][1418.23][applause]
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. You know, we started this day with this incredible park dedication, and I believe part of that was a belief in us showing us our dedication to our quality of life here on the North Shore. You know, six years ago, during the campaign for the 2018 election, a young woman around twenty years old got up to speak to a group of us who were running for election. She was near tears, and she goes, "You know, I'm, I'm twenty years old, and I'm going to school at UBC, and I want to be independent, and the way I could do that is if my parents could build a suite in the basement of our home, and I could live there affordably and go to school and be independent." But at the time, we didn't allow secondary suites in West Vancouver. That was six years ago. In shortly after, I think maybe even three years after that, we moved into a policy that now says you can have a home, a suite, and a coach house. We recognized that there was a demand for an alternative type of housing, more affordable options for families and people to stay together. And in my time, and now we're in a situation where staff has shown us that because of this policy, the provincial guidelines don't really, or bylaws, don't actually apply to our single-family dwelling zones like that. And, and I applaud this because, in all my life, I've, I've learned that once you're reacting to things, you're actually not going to have a great result. We've been proactive. We've recognized it. We've set ourselves up for the type of gentle infill that provides the type of housing that we need in our community and that works. Staff have gone back and researched, doing a, a number of properties that have been parceled together. I think there was CD10 zoned. I can't remember what they're called, but, you know, and, and I, you know, I recognize because they're not under our single-family dwelling zoning that they need to be considered for this policy, and, and you'll see in the report that they've recommended this. But if you go visit those sites, these are all kind of unique parcels with odd access, and quite frankly, I can't even imagine how you could build, you know, there's barely one house hanging on a cliff. So, how you could possibly, you know, paint the policy across those and, and have any sort of result, I don't know. But I, I do think the message here is that we've been proactive. So, we have nearly 700 units in queue for coming on, on to the market through Rogers Creek and various other projects that have been already approved. We are in the cusp of discussing the approval of Cypress Village. That would see an increase in our population of 25%. And these are all things that we've done that have a planning and a purpose in our community that work in our community. They're not this reactive policy that just starts this whack-a-mole-type development of, let's do it here, let's do it there, let's see where it lands. It's just, it's a little unnerving, you know, and, and these, these plans are in, in queue, you know, they're, they're all visionary about the future of West Vancouver and where we could, would, should be. So, you know, further to that, there was an article in the North Shore News recently written about how West Vancouver's growth is, is slow again, and it was interesting that he was trying to attribute it to housing demand or housing bills. But, but actually, you know, you know, for rental, we've got an entire tower at Park Royal empty, and then some in the other tower. For residential, we have the sanctuary and various other buildings that are sitting there that are not, that are empty. I spoke with the real estate board. There's 30% more on the market right now, and sales are only up 4% from next year. So, we're not stopping people from coming to our community. They're living here as they can. So, I just don't see how we should be entertaining this policy right now. We're on the cusp, like I say, of Cypress Village, and until that's decided, a transformational impact on our community and infrastructure and population, to do, layer this policy on top of that, I, I feel really uncomfortable. So, I'm, I'm not going to support these bills and suggest that the, the government be a little more patient with us and just let us do our good work that we've been doing.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Is there any further?[1685.41][1685.41][applause] Is there any further discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? The motion is defeated unanimously. Thank you.[1700.63][1700.63][applause] That was that, wasn't it? So, we'll now move to the, we have a lot of motions on the matter that was before us earlier this evening on the Caulfield Land Use Contract. I'll ask Counselor Watt if you could start these motions.
Oh, thank you.
There we go. Thank you, Counselor Watt.
Yes. I'd like to recommend that the proposed official community plan bylaw number 4985-2018, amendment bylaw number 5301-2024, be read a second time.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Discussion? Question? All in favor? Contrary, carried. Thank you. Counselor Watt.
I'd like to recommend that the proposed official community plan bylaw number 4985-2018, amendment bylaw number 5301-2024, be read a third time.
Thank you. Discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Contrary, carried. Thank you. Counselor Watt.
And I'd like to recommend that proposed zoning bylaw number 4662-2010, amendment bylaw number 5321-2024, be read a second time as modified.
Thank you. Discussion? Question? All in favor? Contrary, carried. Thank you. Counselor Watt.
And I'd like to recommend that proposed zoning bylaw number 4662-2010, amendment bylaw number 5321-2024, be read a third time.
Thank you.
Second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Question? All in favor? Contrary, carried. Thank you.
And I'd like to recommend that proposed tree bylaw number 4892-2016, amendment bylaw number 5321-2024, be read a second time. number 5322-2024 be read a second and third time.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Question? All in favor? Contrary, carried. Thank you.
And I would like to recommend that proposed development procedure bylaw number 4940-2017, amendment bylaw number 5318-2024 be read a second and third time.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sorry, second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Question? All in favor? Contrary, carried. Thank you, Counselor Watt.
And I'd like to recommend that proposed fees and charges bylaw number 5251-2023, amendment bylaw number 5319-2024 be read a second and third time.
Thank you. Question? All in favor? Contrary, carried. Thanks very much. And now we have a number of notices of motion that have been given by members of council. They are written there. One is to permit alcoholic beverages in Horseshoe Bay Park and White Cliff Park, and that will come forward on June 3. That is presented by Counselors Watt and Cassidy. And we also have a notice of motion regarding four-shore access out on Pasco Road, and that motion will, presented by Counselors Thompson and Snyder, will come forward on June 24. And with that, I'll now turn to reports. And I believe Counselor Cassidy, you'd like to start with a report from mayor and council?
I thought that perhaps in the interest of time, you'd want me to defer it to another week, but as I see other green lights are going on, may as well.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Then I will.
There you go.
So last Friday, just to let everyone know, your Metro Vancouver Liquid Waste Board made a trip out to Lulu Island to see their wastewater treatment facility, which was quite amazing. It's quite amazing for two reasons. Number one is to do with the campaign which is occurring that don't put anything down your drain, except water, your milk, your yogurt, your cheese, your grease, your whatever. Do not put that down your drain because it ends up at your sewage treatment plant, and it is quite the process to remove it before this water, treated water, goes into the Fraser River. But most, another issue which they're doing out in Lulu Island is they are using, endeavoring to use the ammonia, which is derived from the product, for hydrogen. So it is becoming quite an experimental facility out there, extremely interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Watt, did you have a report for us?
I do. So last week, I had the most moving experience. I was invited to the Hollyburn Community Services Society Youth Safe House, and it was a 16-year celebration of the location of that property. Beautiful setting on the Capilono River. And it was incredibly moving, and I just want to share a story from that day. There was a young man, he would have been about 17, and he shared with us that two years ago, he was, the police came to his home in Richmond and removed him and probably his parents. He didn't really say who. And they took him to a safe house. The only one with a bed was this one in North Vancouver. And this beautiful young man is, he was heading off to another speech where he's down to the, one of the final contestants to be a high school valedictorian at St. George's. He's been taken on by a family in Dunbar, and he's starting political science at UBC in September. And just looking at what this facility does, the kind, care, and compassionate people, and all the donors, just beyond moving. And I just wanted to share that, and I hope this community and across the North Shore continue to support facilities like this and other safe houses for women and the homeless.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Thanks. I just wanted to send out a quick reminder that we have our community cultural days coming up this weekend. So it'll be Friday, it's in Ambleside Park, Friday from 4:00 to 9:30, and Saturday from 11:00 till 9:30.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy?
So in giving the others an opportunity to speak before I mention my second issue and to close myself with the second issue, on Thursday evening, I attended together with our municipal manager, oops, Mr. Findley, we attended the North Shore Congress on substance use. So those were the various elected officials, medical personnel, and the school boards from the North Shore to discuss the pressing issue of substance use and the escalation of deaths in accordance with substance use, and the number of individuals who are dying in their home, which surprises most people, I assume, because most people think that people die on the streets in the downtown east side. No, people die in their homes in West Vancouver and in North Vancouver. So one of the reasons that they have given, and we all know this to be a truism, is that social isolation is now considered the number-one cause of death in North America. You're lonely. So when you look at West Vancouver as a community, and we have Ms. Kettler sitting back there, and look at the facilities that we offer in our parks and our recreation departments, the opportunities for individuals to come together in our library, on our seawall, with dogs, with cats, whatever, because you know we recently allowed dogs on the seawall to walk. And although we've had some negative feedback, the majority of the feedback we've had on that subject matter is very, very positive. You might not want to address somebody, but you'll address them via the dog. So socialization and everything we're doing as a community to break down barriers and bring people together. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy. Counselor Watt?
Yes, I'm wondering, I think Counselor Thompson's had more involvement with this, but this coming weekend, you may want to speak to it, the National Forum on Physical, Mental, and Spiritual Health.
Oh, gosh, that's right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I'm reading a bit, so I think somebody else who knows a little more might want to speak further to that.
Well, that's right. Thank you. And I was remiss in not mentioning that myself. Former Member of Parliament John Weston has been very involved in creating a forum on health and wellness, and it is taking place this week in West Vancouver. And I would encourage everyone who's able to attend the sessions. Thank you. And just as you mentioned, Ms. Kettler, I think I'd like to just recognize Ms. Kettler. For those of you who are familiar with the workings of the Municipal Hall, we're pleased to announce that she has now been appointed Deputy Municipal Manager, and we congratulate her. For those of you who don't know her, she's sitting on that side of the chamber. And we're very grateful to all of our staff for their service to our community. If there are no further reports, could I have a motion to receive the council reports? Counselor Cassidy moved?
Yes.
Seconded by Counselor Snyder. Question? All in favor? Contrary, carried. Are there any public questions or comments this evening? And hearing none, could I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Watt?
I'd like to recommend that the May 27, 2024 regular council meeting be adjourned.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy? Question? All in favor? Contrary, carried. Thanks very much, everyone, for joining us this evening. See you soon.
Okay. Bye. 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 Bye.[1779.13]